One, two, three, four, five.
The end.
2025 officially open. In accordance with clause 5.3 of Council's Code of Meeting Practice, I inform the persons attending this meeting that a) the meeting is being recorded, livestreamed, and made publicly available on the council website, and b) the persons attending the meeting should refrain from making any defamatory statements. To start off today's proceedings, I would like to invite Mrs. Justine Young, the Acting Manager of Civic and Executive Services, to read the prayer of council, the prayer of council, the acknowledgement of country, which will then be followed by the national anthem. Could I ask everyone to please stand?
Before we begin proceedings, I would like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land which we meet and their ancestors, past and present, the Cabragaw clan of Durrech Nation, and I also acknowledge that this land was accessed by people of the Durrewol and Durrech Nations. Affirmation to the council. We affirm our hope and dedication to good governance of our city and the well-being of all Liverpool residents, no matter their race or creed. Tonight, we affirm our hope for sound decision-making for council, which will improve the quality of life in our city. We express our expectations and best wishes for Australia, our nation's future, the mayor, councillors and staff of council, and all those associated with good governance in Liverpool. For the God of our faith, we who are gathered at Liverpool Council pray for the good governance of our city. We pray for the well-being of Liverpool's residents, no matter their race, gender or creed. Tonight, we pray for sound decision-making by council, which can improve the quality of life in our city. We pray for Australia, our nation's future, the mayor, councillors and staff of council, and all those associated with good government in Liverpool. Amen.
Australians all that ask we just for we are young and free. With golden sun and a bell of fortune, our hope is heard by sin. Our love about the nations' midst, our bluesy bridge and rail. In history's danger, every state, our bonds are strong and fair. In joyful strains, let us sing. Beneath our radiant sun and cross, we'll join with hearts and hands. To make this call, may well help us rid and of all our lands. For those who come across the seas, we're boundless plains to share. With courage, let us all combine to advance Australia fair. In joyful strains and let us sing. Advance Australia fair.
Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. We have no councils attending remotely. We have no apologies. We have no condolences. Are there any declarations of interest? No declarations of interest. Well, councillors, I'll move into the agenda item CFD 01. For public exhibition, the draft community strategic plan 2025 to 2035, the draft delivery programme 25 to 29, and the operational plan 2526, the draft long-term financial plan and revenue pricing policy, the fees and charges. And I formally would like to move the recommendation as per the booklet. Second Deputy Mayor? Second Deputy Mayor?
Can I ask a few questions?
Yep, I'll be speaking for my motion first, councillor. So firstly, I want to thank the staff for their countless amount of hours led by the CEO and the relevant directorates for the work and effort in preparing this budget. For those who are out there listening, this is a balanced budget with a slight surplus, and I think that is a very, very good sign considering where we started. And hopefully, we will see many, many more of those balanced budgets coming in the future. I'm sure that is the aim of everyone who is here today. So thank you very much, Mrs. CEO, to the Director of Corporate Support, Director of City Futures, for your teams preparing this. Also, I want to thank you for the work and effort in preparation, the community strategic plan, the 10-year plan, which guides us as a community, as a council, of where we want to go and what we actually want to do. Countless hours have been put into it from the staff, but I also want to thank the community for their participation in the CSP process through the different workshops, surveys and everything else that was put together. And I want to particularly thank the councils for their numerous amount of hours they've also dedicated to putting into those processes, especially with the new council. I know there's a lot to learn, so I want to thank everyone for participating in doing that. It's always good to hear everyone's different view. Now that we have our northern star being the CSP, it's now up to our job over the next four years or three and a half years to deliver it. Just some quick headline items that I believe are worth mentioning for those who are out there. Yes, there's a lot of documentation to read about. This budget has an expenditure, an investment of $531 million. That is a significant amount of money broken up into two parts. Firstly, $284 million in operational expenses to pay the wages and to keep the lights on and to keep on doing everything else that we do, from the libraries, the pools, to cut in the grass, and so on and so forth. What is also very exciting about this budget is the $247 million in capital works programme. That is approximately, that means that every Monday to Friday for the 50-odd plus 52 weeks of the year, the council's investing $1 million per day in either building a footpath, building a road, building a park, building some drainage, or other significant infrastructure. That is a significant amount of money. And I know everybody wants to see where their rates are going, and we'll go up there and highlight where they will be going over the next four-year period. Just some quick highlight items that are within here that are worth noting. We have money going to parks in Austral, Park number 22 and 2. We have the underpass, the M7, going along. We have upgrades to the leisure centre, Michael Wenden. We have Scotland Memorial Park upgrade. We have Gombe Corrie Drive progressing. We have Carri Avenue and Wheelan Drive. We have money going to Heckenberg and Carri Avenue, New World Road roundabout and fixing along there. Pedestrian crossing in Austral on Australis Avenue and Daintree Drive, and many, many, many other projects that are in here. Now, to those who are listening, this is a draft budget, and we want to hear your views as a community. You'll have 28 days where you can make a submission to council of where you think the money should be going. So firstly, we'd like to hear your views on the CSP. Do we have the direction set? Because this direction is going to be set for this term of council and hopefully for longer for that 10-year period. Number two is, is there a project that you think we should be spending more money on or a service? Would you like to see more money put into frontline services? This budget does that. It has more people on the frontline, more green shirts out there cutting the grass and picking up the rubbish through the savings identified. So all in all, it's a positive, but ultimately, this is a draft. We want to hear from you, and we look forward to your feedback. Thank you, everyone. Deputy Mayor, did you want to say something before we go to questions? Oh, actually, councillor Recefs, you have questions?
Yeah, sure. Okay. The budget that we get, it's quite detailed, and the budget that's the community get is not as detailed. Now, I think you guys call it a profile report, and I've noticed that in this agenda, quite a thick agenda, it hasn't been disclosed to the community, so they can actually see a lot deeper into the numbers. Any particular reason why we don't do that?
I'll refer that to the CEO.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor. I'll just refer to the Director of Corporate Service.
Councillor, through the CEO, no business shows that sort of detail. We show very fine detail to you as the directors of this huge organisation, council, whereas the mayor just indicated we've got, you know, half a billion dollars' worth of expenditure planned for the next year. But no business gives that the detail that we provide you in making decisions, right down to the detail decisions that you make, right to each project, the extent of that project. So that's the reason.
Because the one that I have in front of me, it's really not that long. It's probably 10 pages. Honestly, would have been better to include it in the report to give it more context, but that's just my opinion. Now, in terms of the 28-day advertising period, I noticed there was a post on the socials last night with a fact check. People started posting about the budget, and then all of a sudden, comments were turned off. Now, does that go against the 28-day rule? Can we turn off comments like that? Is that part of the 28-day process where people can actually comment on the budget via social medias? What's the means to comment against this budget?
Thank you. Through the Chair, councillor. So the 28 days starts now. You've just passed the, well, the resolutions, up the recommendations. In relation to the fact check, that relates to a initial originating comment in relation to the mayor's involvement in setting rate increases, which was checked. Of course, just for clarity, you councillors, unless it's a special rate variation, you don't set the rates. IPART does. IPART sets the rates for all councils, and for some councils, known as growth councils, IPART will give an additional amount of rate increase. We, the officers, councillors, the mayor et al, have no play in what IPART does to rates other than if we were to resolve a special rate variation. So the community now has 28 days from this evening, ideally, hopefully, if it passes, to make comment on not only the budget and the way we spend money, but the why we spend money. That also includes comments about the draft community strategic plan, a plan that both councillors and council staff are fixated in ensuring that it reflects the intent of what the community want. To say that we want that plan to describe the things articulated through councillors from the community that the council officers can put into play.
So in relation to IPART, you mentioned, there is no obligation on us to increase rates.
Sorry, councillor. Can please direct your questions to the Chair, please?
The Chair, okay. Question is through the CEO, because he was talking about IPART. IPART determines the maximum you can increase your rates, but we are not obligated to increase rates at all, correct?
I will refer that, as far as the obligation is upon council, just over to the Director of Corporate Support.
That's correct.
Thank you. Now, I'm actually going to be speaking against the budget. This is not a reflection on the staff. The staff have done a fantastic job, and they should be commended. But having a look at some of the comments that were on the Facebook page last night in relation to the rate increase, 40 out of 41 were against it. Now, how many people normally respond to a budget when it goes out to advertising? What's the average number? How many responded last year?
Thank you, councillor. I'm just deciding which director to pass that to. I don't think anybody knows, but I'll put it over to the Director of Corporate Support.
Off memory, I think it was about 10, thereabouts.
Okay, thank you. Well, I've got 300 in my inbox against it, which I'll be submitting. Now, proposing a rate increase three times the rate of inflation and double the wages growth, people's salaries having kept up with what we're proposing here today. Now, my position on festivals, everyone's aware of it, so it's no secret. In the budget, it's around 3.1 million. For every million, 1.2 or 1.3 million, that's a 1% increase to the ratepayers. From the emails that I've received, they don't want a rate increase. They don't want to be spending that kind of money on festivals. Now, we've got areas like Edmondson Park and Austral that desperately need infrastructure for their suburbs. There was an option with the festivals to go back to basics, which I found as a happy medium, which would have saved the ratepayers $2 million a year. Now, to continue down the same path, and we've been identified as the worst council in the Sydney metropolitan area by the Order to Generals Office, that's not my opinion, and I've also made comment about these external organisations that we're a member of, like Business Western Sydney, and, you know, from my calculation, it adds up to about £100,000. We can get another frontline worker cleaning our streets in relation to that. Chamber of Commerce, Bankstown doesn't sponsor their Chamber of Commerce. I've actually sponsored the Chamber of Commerce myself. There is nothing preventing us as councillors becoming members of these organisations and paying our There is nothing preventing us as councillors becoming members of these organisations and paying our own way. To put that burden on the ratepayers, I'm against that. If you have a look at also some of our assets that we're renting out, I'll use one in particular, Frankolaverry Community Centre. We're renting it out exclusively for $12,000 a year. That's a 50% discount. Now, things like this, they all add up. It's a small amount, but there's other items which I won't go into that all add up. Everything puts pressure on the ratepayers. Now, the thing that concerns me is I've also mentioned defibrillators in the past. Now, we can allocate $3 million plus to festivals, but not a single dollar for defibrillators. Now, OHNS issues have been spoken about in this council, like there's no tomorrow. But we have an obligation to the community for safety issues. Also, I've noticed allocating for mosquitoes at Chipping Norton is $12,000. Now, we had a massive issue with mosquitoes and living in Chipping Norton, I understand what they went through. But then again, I don't believe that's enough because going back to the $3 million in festivals. Now, we're facing challenging times and a cost of living crisis, which this last election probably showed that every family and individual in Liverpool is suffering from. We have a moral responsibility to listen, to prioritise, to act with compassion. That's why I cannot support a budget that involves a 6% increase to the ratepayers. Increasing rates, especially in our community, will put so much financial strain on our residents who are already feeling the strain and to provide an unfair burden to them, I can't support. We need to be more responsible. We need to redirect, I believe, the festival funding towards other projects that improve everyday life. Now, I won't read some of the comments, but I just want to point out some of the rate increases we've had since 2020. So in 2020, we increased rates at 5%. The CPI was 1.3. At 2021, we increased rates at 4.5, CPI was 0.85%. I'll go to 24 because I won't get into all of it. 24 was a 9.1% increase. The CPI was 2.4%. So there's a pattern there, asking our residents to take more and more of the burden. I will leave it at that.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, do you want to speak for the budget?
My comments are basically this. If we don't increase the rates by the 6% and where the CPI incidentally is 3%, so this is double the CPI. The other issue is that the CPI is not a reflection of council cost. The CPI is a consumer price index which takes into the average homeowner, person, shopper, family person. It does not look at the extra costs that council is involved with. For instance, we're looking at blue metal, gravel, asphalt, all of those issues, they are at a, they rise at a greater rate than the CPI. So there is justification for that. The other thing is looking at the budget, we have had an increase in the award wages of our staff that you cannot get out of. So if we don't increase the rates, who is going to pay for those people? What don't we do in order to get our community workable? We need to cut the grass, we need to fix the roads and so on. That money has to come from somewhere. And as you know, there are a lot of people out there, Facebook people, who are already unhappy with council and its performance. If we don't do this, this is only going to make it much worse. That's basically my opinion. We do have a $280 million capital expenditure that is going to have a major impact on our community. We're looking at community facilities and so on that are going to be a benefit to the community. I don't like rate increases. Nobody likes rate increases. I would like to see if there is in fact one person who's going to say, oh, beauty, let's increase the rates. Everyone will automatically say, I do not want a rate increase. I don't, but what do we sacrifice instead of that? That's basically my opinion. And look, it's up to the residents, the ratepayers, who are going to look at this and they will make a judgement on this. And they are the ones that we have to answer to. I'm happy to answer to ratepayers and I can tell you, I have had a fair number of phone calls early in the morning for people saying to me, councillor, we voted for you. We're not going to vote for you if you increase the rates by that amount. And I've basically said, well, I'm sorry, you don't have to vote for me. I don't intend to run again anyway. But, you know, that's not a really good excuse, but the point is political blackmail is not really something that we should be entertaining. So that's my point of view and I personally think let the ratepayers decide what that budget will be, whether they agree with it or not. And from past experience, we do not get many people actually writing in and saying they either agree or disagree with it. Nobody's going to say this is a perfect budget, but it's the best we can do. We've spent a lot of time, I have spent a lot of time listening to our financial officers and the experts who make up this budget. And sure, we could look at it and say, why are you spending $100,000 on this or the other? But the point is, we're not the experts. You have people in this council, engineers, senior staff that have the expertise. I certainly haven't got the expertise and say, let's stop this particular project when you know there are a lot of interdependent projects that lock together. We don't have that information. We have to rely on the experts to do that. So I'm happy with the information that we've got. And I've spent a fair amount of time, as have all of you, listening to all of this and coming up with, well, we think this is the best way to go. But after all, it's the residents who are going to give you an opinion. Thank you.
Councillor McNaught?
Just have a question. So we'll, you know, we'll put whatever recommendation passes onto public display for 28 days. I'm sure that we will take care of this, but just for the sake of the question, when people respond to the budget and make comment, there's a, there's a process by which they do that, correct? We're not monitoring every social media post for somebody who says, I don't want the rates to rise. We're doing it through a formal process, correct?
Through the Chair. Thank you councillor. Yes, you're absolutely correct. So stakeholders will write to the CEO with their concerns, impressions of the budget over the next 28 days and they will be considered by council. That's the formal approach.
And I guess as a follow up to that, our, our social media and our website and things will have access to that and, and, and marketing around how people make that response.
Thank you, through the Chair. Yes, that's correct. So we'll instruct and guide people how, and how to make an appropriate response to council on the, within the 28 days on the budget.
Are there any other speakers?
Question?
Yes, Deputy Mayor.
Could I get the financials through the CEO, I imagine? The, the IPART reasoning, that the 6%, how that is actually made up? I know it's not just 6%, there are steps. Thank you.
Through the Chair, we'll have a crack at that now councillor. I think it was 3.2, but I'm going to, I'm going to refer to the, I've got the 3.2 wrong. Or the base, there is a base IPART, there's a base IPART decision and then the growth council decision. I'll pass that to Director Corporate Services.
Thank you, through the CEO. And just for clarification and a couple of comments, the exhibition period starts tomorrow. It hasn't started yet, so it's 28 days from tomorrow. And councillor might mention to some rate increases in the past. He missed out 21 and 21, 22 and 22, 23. Just for fullness, in 21, 22, it was 2% rate increase. And in 22, 23, it was a 1% rate increase, just for the, for completion. The, the CEO and I have made some inquiries as to why councils have not included the IPART increase. There were none that we are aware of. In terms of its calculation, includes, it includes a combination of a base cost.
Sorry, can I just interrupt, just a clarification? So through the CEO, so every council has adopted what IPART?
I can't say that.
To your, to your, from what you've seen so far.
Mister Mayor, I can't say that because they, they're going through the same processes as we are. But if history shows that, that there's no, we are not aware of any councils that don't, don't include the full rate increase.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
The base cost charge is 3.6%. So that's the base increase that IPART gave. Now, they got that based on analysis of labour, cost of assets and operating costs. So it is not just CPI, it is more a, a industry type index. In addition to that, they're giving us 0.2 of a percent to reimburse partially our election costs. So that happens, happens once every four years. Again, all councils will get something, get that. And we, for this year, we got a growth factor increase of 2.2%. And what council needs to be aware of is that there has been a parliamentary committee that has done a review into the cost of local governments to finance infrastructure. The report came out and it's, it's a document that's, you know, it's sort of two inches thick and 30 or 40 recommendations. One of those recommendations is to do away with the rate pegging. And the reason for that is that they recognise that rate pegging is a limitation on providing services to the community. The minute, the state government has responded to those, to those recommendations and has indicated it is not going to remove rate pegging. But what is important is that they actually indicate that there, there has been some deficiency in the previous calculations of the rate peg amount. And that has, that has, they've gone a long way to rectifying that with this inclusion of a growth factor from 2022. And as I said, that represents 2.2% of the 6%. So if, given that council, this council has not been getting that growth factor prior to 2022, we've probably been getting less than the normal cost increases that we should get. For council's information, again, just so they get a full picture when they talk about rates in the budget, over the last decade, there have been 83 special rate variations sought from 83 councils. Just for, just for the year coming, there are six. The increases that are being sought range from 12% in addition to the 6%, or their, whatever their IPART figure is, to 74% over two years. And there are simpler figures going back for the whole 10 years. So councils throughout New South Wales have recognised and the reasons they've been seeking these extra increases above IPART have been to maintain financial sustainability, to repay loans, for asset maintenance, infrastructure investment, maintenance of service levels of, to your community and to increase, get a, a stable rate base. So we have not sought a special rate variation over that time. So I think that goes, answers your question, just gives council some information from which to make their decision.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Sorry, additional question. Can, can we get an idea of what our bordering councils are asking for through IPART? For instance, our neighbouring councils, do we have that information available?
Thank you. Through the Chair, I'll revert to Director of Corporate Services, who is actively seeking that detail.
The IPART calculation, this is the IPART figure for, for these councils. For Campbelltown, it's 5.5%.
I think Camden is probably, if I can through the CEO, Camden is very relevant to it, being, being a greenfield council similar to ours.
Camden is 7.5%.
Yep, makes sense. They have, they have their growth. Fairfield, Fairfield doesn't have any new development in it. It's not really comparable. Maybe Penrith?
Penrith is 3.9, Parramatta is 6.2. Blacktown, Blacktown is 5.9.
Is that sufficient adjacencies, Deputy Mayor?
I'm happy with that. I, I did a little bit of checking myself and there were councils like Galburn, for instance, asked for a 57% increase in their rates. They were granted 22%. Willoughby Council in the city, now these are not growth councils, but it goes to show how much they're asking and they're not growth councils. We're a growth council, so we're asking for the extra 2.2%. But there's quite a few council who are way over. There's, as I said, there's quite a few, 22%, 37% is another that I couldn't remember. But so when we look at a 6%, a 6% increase, I think that's reasonable as a comparison to others. That's just my opinion.
Thank, are there any other speakers? I just want to base up on the debate and thank you councillors for that. With your indulgence, if I can, just one slight amendment that we just increased the mosquito budget to $75,000. If the Secretary would be happy with that. Increase the mosquito budget to $75,000. Councillor, let me see if they.
Sorry, Mister Mayor, why, why are we, we looking at that? Looking at the previous spending that was there, we, we had allocated several years ago, we, we spent, we had $20,000 in their reserve. Now, we didn't spend it and then all of a sudden we had the mosquito infestation. That's highly unlikely to happen again. The reason we had the problem is nobody knew the source. Then when they found the source, of course, we had to do something about it. It's highly unlikely to happen again. So why would you want to put money in something that?
Just, just in case it does, because if we don't spend it, we don't spend it. Councillor Kineb?
Yeah, I think it was myself who moved the motion at a previous council meeting when the plague was prevalent in the community, that it was up to 50,000 and that's what council voted on anonymously. So I think because that was, because we haven't discussed this before at our budget sessions and because the last known position to council was up to 50,000, I think if it's going to be included, it should be 50,000 as, or up to 50,000 as determined necessary.
I'm, I'm happy with that. Yep, thank you.
I've got a question. I'm happy for that to be increased, but I'm not going to be voting for the budget. Unless you put in there, we go option four, we reduce the festivals down to option four, can we make an amendment?
That's, that's a foreshadowed motion councillor.
Well, so is yours.
No, it's not.
Yes, it is.
I'm the Chair councillor, it's not.
Well, it is, you're actually amending the motion.
Thank you. So look, if everyone, if there's no further speakers for or against, then I'll have, I'll have my right of reply. And once again, thank you councillors for that. And once again, I just want to thank everyone for their time and effort. Now, many people have full time jobs here and the work coming to the sessions and over and over and over. But it's, I think it's been a good outcome and here we go. We've identified one thing that we probably didn't, I personally didn't miss that. So thank you councillor CFC for bringing that to our attention and especially councillor Kineb's original motion that he passed about it. But, and we'll see what the community has to say and we look forward to all the community's feedback on this. I mean, we, we got it out there. If there's no further discussion.
Can I move a foreshadowed motion? Sorry, I, I'm talking to the Chair.
I've had, I've had my right of reply councillor.
Is that a yes or a no?
I've got to check this, let me just check because it's a little bit late for that. When can you move a foreshadowed motion? You bear with me for a moment. What's your foreshadowed motion councillor? Whilst we're looking.
To adopt option four for the budget regarding the festivals, I think option four that we presented with showed as savings of around 1.7 million. Someone can correct me on that?
Can you just clarify exactly what it is so it can be written on the screen, please? Can you just clarify exactly what it is so it can be written on the screen, please?
Just through the Chair, I'll just refer to the Director of Community who have the data there.
Just before we go there, I'm just... Just give me one moment. On the balance of probability, I'll, you still can, because the motion hadn't been put to a vote yet. So I'm happy with that. So yes, sorry, CEO. Just before you do it, so what is your adopt option, what is your foreshadowed motion councillor?
I think the director was about to answer a question. But I need to know that answer so I can use it.
Yeah, we need your wording councillor.
The number is important.
Yes, through the Chair. Understand councillor, so the issue is option four. Option four relates to a series of options presented to the councillors. And what we're after now is the discrete number that was applied to option four councillor, before you can set your foreshadowed motion in play. I'll just refer to the Director of Community.
Thank you. Through the Chair, the total cost for the back to basics model will be 1.9. The savings to the provision that's in the budget will be 1.76.
Okay, so that's fine. I'm happy with that. And redirect those savings to frontline services and also add the increase in the mosquitoes budget in there as well.
Do you have a second there? The motion lapses. We'll put the motion as moved by myself and second Deputy Mayor. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, I declare the motion carried.
If I could have my name recorded as voting against?
Yep. Wonderful. There being no further business, I declare the meeting closed. Thank you, everybody.